7:00 PM on December 13th, 2021. Quorum of the Planning Board being present. Call this meeting to order. A couple of housekeeping items up at the front. Obviously, we're short a member this evening, so I'll let all the petitioners tonight know that it's up to you whether you want to move forward or not, knowing that this four members, not five, present. Depending on the matter you have before us, that means you either need to get four out of four or three out of four of those present if you want to continue to vote if we get to that point for your particular matter. Two other housekeeping items. We had our last meeting canceled, so we did not get a chance to say goodbye to our recording secretary, Dawn. So I will do so now. Obviously, she's already left us, but not soon forgotten. And Ms. McGinty will be leaving us soon. This will be her last meeting with us this evening. So we will wish you well tonight, since you are here.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Yeah.
All right. So with that, get our first item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes from October 4th, October 25th, and November 8th.
So moved.
All right. So we have a motion to approve all three nights' worth of meetings. Do we have a second? Second, first, I'm sorry. Motion being made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries for all three unanimous. Moving on to Agenda Item B. Committee reports administrative actions. Anybody have any committee reports that they wish to make at this time? So, all right. Moving on to Town Planner's Report.
There was none, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So moving on to Agenda Item B3. 1420 Andover Street Bond Release. Do we have anybody here for 1420 Andover Street?
No, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe so.
Okay. All right. So in our packets, we have the, it's the intention of the owner, I guess, to not move forward. And they've sent us a letter understanding that in the event that they do wish to move forward before their permit runs out, that they know they need to put the bond back before they can go forward.
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk, I'm sorry. Both. All right. So with that, we have two. There's the bond of $10,000 and the sidewalk contribution of $10,876.40.
I think we should take two votes on those.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we got the numbers. All right.
Motion to release the bond of $10,000.
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. As for the sidewalk contribution.
Motion to release the sidewalk funds of $10,000 and whatever.
$876.40. Motion made.
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously as well. Just care Agenda Item B3. Moving on to Agenda Item B4. 1058 Chandler Street Application Withdrawal. Do we have anyone here for 1058 Chandler Street?
So, no, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe so.
Well, that was pretty straightforward. They wish to withdraw their application without prejudice.
So moved.
We have a motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Just care B. Moving on to Agenda Item C. 2 John Street Family Suite Special Permit. If you have anybody here for 2 John Street. The motion to waive the poll rating. Motion made. Do we have a second? Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. The floor is yours.
What did you just do? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, we just started the hearing. So if you would just give your name and address, then you're free to continue.
Linda Ricardo Bravant, 2 John Street, Chandler.
Can I just have you pull the microphones down kind of towards you? Because that's how we're recording it for the minutes. That way you pick up everything. There you go. If you'd just state your name and address one more time.
Linda Ricardo Bravant, 2 John Street.
All right. Floor is yours.
I put in a request to, for a special permit for my residence, for a family suite.
Okay. All right. Short and sweet. Mr. Fowler?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. How are you?
I'm sure you were caught unawares of this.
I was.
Yes. My question to you is, when you moved in, was there a second kitchen in there?
Yes, except for the appliances.
Well, appliances don't make the kitchen, but they add to it.
No, there was counter space and...
Sink?
To be honest with you, there was, I have a picture of it here. There was a vermicar countertop.
Yep.
And it was, there were cabinets in the bottom, you know, where a stove would be and where a dishwasher would be.
Was there a sink?
Yes. But I didn't see the sink. When I, after I bought the house, that vermicar countertop was gone and there were spaces available for the appliances. And it was a Corian countertop, so I thought, well, gee, you know, maybe Chris fixed it over or something, so...
I mean, it's not that the previous owner didn't know that they weren't supposed to put it in until they did what you're doing now.
Right. But I do notice that they had a citation, not a citation. It was in February of 2000. And they had, what would you call it? A violation, which they never attended to and nobody ever looked it up. Nobody could tell me what that citation was. Or what, it's in here. Not that, I'm sorry, I keep saying citation.
That's fine.
But, you know, there was something that they weren't following, some kind of a...
Here. The reason I ask is all the correspondence from the building inspector on the permit and letters that are after specify that not to be a second family unit.
Right.
So obviously, you were put in the middle. And I have, I'm sorry for that. Not that we did anything wrong.
No.
If they had done what you're doing now, you wouldn't be doing this today.
No, I know that. You know, and I just think there was, it was overlooked or it just didn't, this is a notice of State Building Code Violation.
Right.
With rank and else. And that was in February of 2000.
Well, thank you. Just, good luck.
Mr. Ryder?
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Delaney? Share is all said as well. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none, right back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion made in second. It also favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the family suite special permit itself.
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Motion made in seconded. That's with the standard language included. New language, as a reminder.
While building code requirements.
All right. Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay. Thank you. I'll need it.
Simple and painless, right?
I've already put my...
We tried.
Solar connection.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't bring that up because Mr. Vitale was not...
And after putting, getting my Title V clearance, because I didn't realize that I went down to the fire department and that's what they told me. Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, I'll need it.
Where's Vinnie?
Moving on to Agenda Item D. 103 Serrano Lane, Family Suite Special Permit Continued. And this one is being requested to be continued to, well, not requested. It's already been on the books for continued to our January 10th, 2022 meeting at...
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. It's already done. We don't need a motion for that, right? Or do you need us to motion it?
You didn't, it wasn't...
Okay, all right. So do I have a motion to continue it to 7?
Yeah.
All right. So I have a motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. I wasn't sure if that was one of the ones we had kicked forward. Moving on to Agenda Item E.
The lady can sit here. Is she late?
Oh. Moving on to Agenda Item E. Also being requested to be continued to our January 10th, 2022 meeting at...
7:05.
7:05. So do we have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Motion made in second. It all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So those are both continued. Moving on to Agenda Item F. 30 East Street.
I apologize. I was putting my package in order here. Can we go back to Item E for a second?
Yeah.
Ms. McGinty?
Yeah.
Is it still our recollection that we have no record of the sidewalk being permitted or paid?
So, yes, Mr. Fowler, my knowledge is that the community development has not received the fund donation for the sidewalk.
Yeah. It appears the town is in the middle of this one. Such as that, like, lady was earlier. The owner of that area says he, you know, he put the funds in. People buying it have told us. So we have to make sure our records are straight because the person who's buying it is spending an awful lot of money trying to recoup his losses because he is now the proud owner of two places. The one he was going to move into and then found out he could get this one. And now this is holding us up. Him up.
So I don't think it's a matter of us not having the correct record. I believe they'd never paid the sidewalk donation.
That's right. He's, the person that owns it now is telling everyone else, oh, I paid that.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So again, we're moving on to Agenda Item F. 30 East Street. Continued from our 11:08 meeting. You just state your name for the record. The floor is yours.
Good evening, members of the board. Dennis greets you with Andover Consultants with an office at 1 East to replace him doing. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant Carolina Properties for the proposed mixed-use development at 30 East Street. We were last before the board in the beginning of November. We, of course, continue tonight. In between that time, we provided revised plans to the board and we received review comments from the engineering department on Thursday. I had a chance to speak to Kevin Hardeman about those comments. We're really working on, you know, two or three items at this point. We do have a draft response letter that we drafted to provide to the engineering department this evening. We're hoping that the board possibly has had an opportunity to review those comments to get their input before we revise and resubmit the plans. The plan that I have here is the plan that was most recently submitted. There's some changes since the last meeting. We've clarified some of the parking visitor office unit, spaces reserved for units. We've also included an additional parallel parking space to, again, get one additional space. We have also made some changes to the sightlines for the engineer exiting. So looking both, in both directions on East Street. And that's on the second page of the submitted plans. The applicant is, was unable to attend tonight. He's not feeling well. However, he is hopeful that the board would be able to review those comments and provide some feedback so we can get this wrapped up hopefully at that next meeting in January.
All right. So the comments you're referencing, do you have current comments?
Yeah.
The November 23rd? Those are the most recent comments? 11/23?
From engineering?
No. The ones you want us to look at?
No, the December 8th comments from the engineering department.
Oh, okay, yeah, we have those. I thought you meant you had responses to that.
I apologize. So we have, we have, I spoke to Kevin on Friday. We've drafted some revised, or drafted some comments to respond to those comments or respond to the engineers' comments. Before we revised plans and submitted final drawings, we wanted to make sure the board was what they were looking for in particular to some of the comments regarding, you know, volume of runoff and also the swale specifically.
Okay. So maybe it would be easier if you told us what you thought your responses were going to be and then go for them.
Sure, I will. So there's two, and I spoke to Kevin about this. The comment regarding the volume, so the special permit regulations require the peak rate of runoff is reduced in the developed conditions. In this case, there's a small increase in the volume of runoff. We describe it as de minimis. It's really a small amount of increase of volume to a property line. Kevin, I believe, understands that the regulations only require that the rates be reduced, which we have done. So there's a question of this, this small increase in volume. And I, there's a couple different, you know, grading. We can put in a small impression. We can try to capture some of that stormwater on our site. I just wanted the board to understand that there's no way for us to completely zero that number unless we make some changes to the plans that would prove costly. But that's the one comment. The second comment is a swale running along the property line. And we created a small swale adjacent to this wall. So the abutting side of 20 East Street grates towards our site. So it's going to be a small swale adjacent to this retaining wall. So again, Kevin was worried that the capacity of that swale would not be sufficient to capture the runoff from the landscaped area. And just so the board kind of understands, the runoff that we're talking about is the runoff from this landscaped area here, which will be running towards this site and then down a swale. Then the volume increase is the back of the site here, which, again, this is this landscaped area, which is going to be running off to the abutting property owned by the Tewksbury Congressional Church. Everything else on the site, the buildings, all the paved area, is captured in the closed drainage system and sent underground to an underground infiltration chamber. So we're talking about two small grass landscaped areas that we've done our best to either swale away from near butter or to landscape in such a way that the volume is reduced to the extent practicable. But understanding that we are matching peak rates per the regulations, it's just this small increase in volume that I think that's kind of where we're, you know, one of the last issues we have to overcome here.
So maybe it's just me, but... So when you had your conversation, did you, you did not finish resolving it and are now asking us?
We, so I offered a couple potential solutions to Kevin and understanding he didn't want to comment on those specifically without seeing a plan or a design, which we're happy to provide. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't kind of on this hamster wheel where we're revising the plans and not really getting to a point where we've satisfied the engineer or the board. But again, we just received the comments on Thursday. We had a conversation and then now it's Monday. So we're at a point where we can submit revised plans tomorrow and then the board can review them along with Mr. Hardeman.
Mr. Ryder?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any drainage, you know, I think should be forecome. We do any approvals of anything should be presented to the town engineer. Ultimately, the end of this, it's a responsibility, falls back to the responsibility of the town, not the board. So I personally don't feel comfortable voting on anything that has not yet passed through Mr. Hardeman.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree. I mean, there, you know, sometimes when it gets to an endpoint and there's something for us to resolve, sometimes at that point, we may make a decision. But this sounds like it's still at the point where you're having the back-and-forth discussion of trying to satisfy what's been asked for. And you haven't finished with that yet. So there's nothing really for us to do. I mean, I'm not going to tell you to do one thing or another. I'm going to tell you to make the town engineer happy and figure out which version that is. Mr. Fowler?
Eric, you're right. Because the second-to-last paragraph, if you want to call it, is the standard item when they're, they're not satisfied. The engineering department is not satisfied. And I'll read it. "The Engineering Division withholds providing a recommendation to the planning board until above comments have been addressed." So until that's done, it's going to be difficult, if ever, for us to give, you know, an approval. And I hope your applicant knows that.
Yeah, we do understand that. And that's why we anticipated this being pushed out to the January 10th meeting in order to respond to these comments and to get them addressed. But that's the feedback we were looking for from the board. Just if your preferences have Mr. Hardeman completely give us a review letter that says they've been satisfied.
Mr. Hardeman, if I may. Mr. Hardeman, Item 1 talks about the auto turn simulations, which I was surprised we still didn't have them in the new package so we could look at it. You know, we had a multiple, and that was part of the problem. We were dealing with three or four sets of plans continuously. And, you know, which one do you want to use? Well, this new one doesn't have the auto turn in it, but it says, "The auto turn simulations provided by the applicant appear to show the areas where the passenger vehicle comes in conflict with the proposed residential garage bays." Has that been rectified?
We had a conversation, Mr. Hardeman and I. The auto turns show the trucks or the vehicles exiting out of the garages with no conflicts. We can provide, you know, a more blown up, you know, smaller scale to demonstrate that. The garage bays are standard width for all vehicles. There's no reason that the car shouldn't be able to easily navigate in and out of those garage spaces.
I would agree in concept. And he goes on to say, you go, he goes on to say, "Number three needs to make multiple backward and forward maneuvers to exit the parking lot." Is that still a fact?
The two units on the left, so Units 1 and 2, we're calling them. It's a standard one-point turn. So you're backing out of your garage bay and then you're turning the wheel and heading out to East Street. Unit 3, which is the unit that you head into, it's a standard three-point turn. So again, it's backing out, pulling forward, backing out again, then pulling out into East Street. So those are fairly typical movements in a low-traffic area.
And there's no way to put a, obviously not. Your hot top, I don't have a copy of that. Your hot top is not to the lot line, is it?
No. It is, no, it's not all the way to the lot line, but there is a grade elevation change there. So we have a small retaining wall.
So there's no way you could come out, pull in, and then swing out?
No, yeah, we don't have any more space there to add additional pavement.
So you have to have someone who lives in that house and knows how to drive?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Ryder, did you have anything additional?
You know, I agree with Mr. Fowler. I still see issues with parking. I mean, I still see, as you stated, you're talking a three-point turn coming out. I think management of that lot is going to be very, very difficult. You're going to have a lot of angry neighbors. First person that comes in and parks behind Garage Bay Number 2, visiting their friend. Number one's not going to be a happy customer. And I think management of the site, I mean, as I've said from the beginning, you're trying to fit a lot of, a lot of units into a very small parcel. That's it.
Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. First of all, I'm not a big person for swales to be a drainage item. Is this going to be maintained properly so that it works all the time? I mean, you know, after a while, they'll, you think, oh, let the grass grow. They can let anything happen and the swale won't drain the water. You know, I'm a, I don't particularly care for it, but I want to make sure there's a guarantee that that swale is not going to change or, you know, nobody can change it with landscaping or anything else. And the next thing is the, I've been saying it since the very beginning. The Number 3 unit with the parking is going to be awful. You know, it almost looks like if people have guests, they're going to be parking their cars on East Street to get in and out of the units. So we, I don't see, I don't have a picture of the auto turns and whatever that swept thing is that they're talking about. But that's my concern. You guarantee me the swale is going to be good for the drainage so the water doesn't come back out. That's fine. Okay? And we're all concerned about the parking. But I have a feeling that where there's not enough, the rule says you have enough. But the rules don't say you can put the cars on East Street to park and visit people. So that's my concern.
All right. So, I mean, when we left this the last time, I think we made it fairly clear that, you know, we're threading a needle here in terms of trying to work, you know, with you to get, you know, where you want to go. But that, you know, all the things we discussed have to be done. And, you know, I mean, as far as the parking goes, and I know we had this conversation last time, you meet the parking requirements. You exceed the parking requirements. I'm not really sure much more I can ask of you than that. I understand it's not ideal because of other circumstances, but the fact of the matter is you were told how much parking there should be. You're in excess of that. There's not much more I can say. We were aware of the unit and the three-point turn. Ultimately, it just comes down to, are we okay with it or not? It's just simply how it has to happen. But one of the things we said was it's imperative that that section be kept clear because that is necessary to make that turn. Otherwise, that person has to make a long backwards drive out or a long backwards pull-in when they come home. One or the other, if they can't use the three-point turn area. So those things are imperative. They have to happen. They have, you know, the markings, the, you know, will be towed, all that stuff, were things we discussed that have to be done. done. In addition to that, now, we have the engineering issues. There isn't, there isn't really wiggle room on these things, like, they're gonna have to be dealt with, because we're already kind of right on the line here, as far as, you know, being able to continue with the way you wanna do it, and how we're gonna be able to be satisfied with it. So, you definitely gotta get back with the engineer, you gotta get that stuff straightened out. I can't speak for the other members, but I don't wanna be in a position on this where I'm trying to make the decision, as far as, you know, you can't satisfy X, Y, or Z, and then you're throwing it back to us to say, well, you're gonna have to okay it if we're gonna move forward. Like, I don't wanna have to be making those decisions, you know, I want the Ts crossed, the Is dotted, and brought in in its final version, and, you know, put before us, because I think it's the only way it's gonna work. Alright, so, you know, beyond that, I don't have anything new to add, because again, these are mostly engineering items that you need to sort out, and then it's just a matter of, did you do everything we asked you to do at the last meeting in terms of onsite in order to make this manageable? If all those things are, you know, are done when you come back the next time, I will likely be satisfied. Again, I won't speak for the other members, we'll see where everybody else is then. Alright? Anyone, oh, Mr. Fowler?
You forgot one question. The unit in the furthest unit in, the one that has to back out, where do they back to?
The furthest unit in would do a three-point, do a three-point turn?
Can you show me on the, you have a laser? Okay, yep, where do they back to?
Back out, back forward, back out, and back.
Okay, okay, that's a snow zone.
Excuse me?
That's a snow zone.
That's, that's not a snow zone, the--
What's the, what is the hatch?
That's gonna be hatched as no parking, so there'll be signet stating no parking, and that will be a yellow stripe or hatched, you might see that at a store or plaza that indicates no parking.
As we asked for, didn't we?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So you're saying they pull out, pull to the left as you're backing out, take another turn, and turn around. Well, that's the only way they can get out of there, because if they pull out any further than that, there's no other place to turn around, because if there are four cars in those four spaces, that precludes that to happen. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Delaney?
Is there any provisions, like, where the guy in unit three, when he has to back out, are there gonna be signs up there that you have to, no parking here?
I believe we asked those to be installed, those are on the plans, correct?
Yeah, yes. There are no, there are no parking signs on the plan.
Okay. As well as the markings on the ground?
And, yes, and paving striping as well.
And I did believe, and I, I'll plead that I did not remember if I saw it or not, but did we also say that it was the, that was gonna be one of the tow-at-your-own-expense signs there?
We can add that to the plan, but I did not--
I just thought we discussed it, I mean, it's gonna be one of those things that that area has got to stay clear, so everything necessary, you know, to do that, is gonna have to be present, because that is, it's such an imperative area for that unit, it has to stay clear. Okay. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Alright, hearing none, everybody did see in their package, we did receive one submitted correspondence. Everybody saw that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that'll be made part of the record.
Yep.
Alright, with that then, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make the motion to continue--
To seven ten on January tenth.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Alright, we'll see you at the next one.
Thank you.
Alright, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
On a usual trip.
Alright, then we'll allow hearing, hearing G to get themselves set up, and then we'll start once Mr. Delaney returns. Just a reminder to everyone, we remain on until--
Yes.
Till then, just so everybody knows. Do we have anyone here from New England Power Company? Alright, so this is agenda item G, this is transmission line right-of-way, Power Company Road, New England Power Company land disturbance permit, a motion to waive the public reading?
Go move.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Make state your name for the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening, my name's Allison Melman, I'm here from BSC Group, and here on behalf of New England Power, land disturbance permit application, made for the major land disturbance for the J-162 OPTW installation project. We did receive our letter from Kevin Hardeman after he reviewed our application, stating that he does recommend issuance under this permit, and that our application and plan is in conformance with the Toluks Berry's ordinance.
Alright, we'll start with Mr. Ryder.
I think just for the audience, if you could give a brief description of what you're doing, we see it, but just the residents know what type of work is going on with this.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
The purpose of the project is on maintenance of existing utility infrastructure, it's a transmission line, it's called the J-162, it's a 115 KV overhead line. The purpose of the work is for New England Power to enter onto the right-of-way to replace existing structures and do recommended maintenance as required to upkeep the facilities. Most of these structures were observed to be damaged, woodpecker damage and other such they need to upgrade. Facilities to keep, to make sure that the transmission system is still in working order. As part of that, since a lot of these structures have been worked on for decades, they do need to do some improvements to get access onto their right-of-way for the larger equipment that's required to complete this work. Some of that equipment may include concrete trucks, large overhead cranes, and larger excavators. So they are proposing to do some minor grading in some of these areas, those are shown on the red lines on your plan, those are existing access routes where it's minor grading and some widening of the existing access. Other locations where you see the white lines, that's more of a substantial improvement, they may need to strip some topsoil, place a gravel down, and also do mowing along the sides of the roads in both, in both of those situations. All work will occur, like I said, without the existing utility right-of-way, so that there are easement rights in place for these activities.
Okay, and the poles are replacing in-kind, same type?
As we're noted, sir, so we have the replace pole, those are the in-kind, and then you'll see we have also install pole with a case on, that's the yellow dots, that's where, due to engineering requirements for, say, like dead-end structures or corners, there's a little bit more loading associated with those, they're gonna need to put those on concrete foundations.
Okay, okay, I'm good, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Delaney?
Oh, yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you. I wanna say this is a pretty concise application.
Thank you.
Very easy to follow, and pictures say a thousand words. I'm well set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, the chair is all set as well. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Once, twice, no one? Alright, I'll bring it back to the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously, as to the land disturbance permit?
Motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve as presented this evening.
Alright, a motion made, second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to administrative, or returning to administrative items, part two, under agenda item H, this is agenda item H1, 205 Washington Street, non-substantial change determination.
State your name for the record, the floor will be yours.
Good evening, Brian Wentworth from BSC Group, representing New England Power Company for this. And I, I didn't bring a copy of the plan, the last time I was here, I was able to plug in and present on the screen, so I was kinda planning to do that, but since it is non-substantial change, we did have, I can give a brief summary. The, the project was presented to the board over the summer, and was approved, the modification of the special permit, and a land disturbance permit was approved for the expansion of the substation at 205 Washington Street, Power Company Road. The construction has begun, when, you know, leading into construction, the contractor and New England Power Company realized that they would like an additional access road to connect the existing portion of the substation to the, the proposed portion of the substation. There's another access gate, but it would just be, there's a main gate where there's, you know, it's a very secure gate where, you know, the, most of the traffic flows in and out of that gate. So, you know, we presented this to the planning board as a non-substantial change. The site plan was revised with the stormwater management report, both were reviewed this week by Mr. Hardeman, and a letter was issued this week that he saw no issues with the plans or the revisions to the, to the stormwater report, and agreed that it qualified as a non-substantial change.
Alright, Mr. Delaney?
I guess, you know, with Kevin Hardeman, usually you don't get a straightforward answer like we got here tonight. You know, he has no issues with this, with this problem, so I'm, I'm going along with it. You know, I know, I know he's here.
It's just the way you said it, so--
I'm sorry. I know he's here, that's why I said it. But the thing is, it's, you know, it's pretty straightforward, I guess, I'm all set with it.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Hardeman gives me the word, that's it.
Mr. Fowler?
Mr. Delaney took the words out of my mouth. Not so much, not so pointed, but if Mr. Hardeman, I agree with Mr. Hardeman, and I feel that this is a non-substantial change, and nice to see we're on the same page.
Mr. Ryder?
I'm good.
Alright. I am as well, the only thing I will say, though, is, at some point, not that there's any official number, but non-substantial changes continuing, continuing, you know what I mean? At some point, the cumulative effect is not non-substantial anymore. You know what I mean? So let's make su-- yeah, let's, let's try not to keep piling on.
I believe this would, this should be the only one.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's a bad sign when the first line of, like, the explanation is, we approved a non-substantial change just months ago, and then going on from there, you know? Alright, so, what is the pleasure of the board, then?
Make a motion to approve--
To determine that this is a non-substantial change?
Right.
Alright, so--
It's not a non-substantial change. Second.
So, we have a motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries now as to the non-substantial change requested. Motion to--
Motion to approve.
Alright, motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Moving on to agenda item H2, 999 Whipple Road, DPW and school facility building, concept plan review.
Yeah.
Would you think we're all that we should know about?
Sure.
Good luck.
Alright, gentlemen, once you get yourselves squared away, if you just state your names for the record, the floor will be yours.
Brian Gilbert, Director of Public Works.
Jeff Alberti, Weston and Sampson.
Tony Westpiezer, Weston and Sampson.
And Kevin Hardeman, Town chairman.
That's right, he is here, that's right.
He's here.
Go ahead.
Chairman members of the board, this project seeks to build a combined DPW with school maintenance facility at the current site of the DPW on, DPW on Whipple Road. The original DPW facility is 60 years old, and addition was added to address growing needs of the department in 1980, increasing the footprint to 22,502 square feet. These structures are still being utilized by the DPW's Highway Force, Reboarder, School of Fleet Maintenance, Engineering and Administration Divisions for Operations, Equipment and Storage Offices and Storage Space. The plan is to demolish the existing facility and build two structures totaling 63,000 square feet that will house DPW and school maintenance staff. The current DPW facility does not meet the current space needs and functioning of the department today, resulting in concerns of employee safety and health, care and damage to vehicles and equipment, work efficiencies in storage of tools and supplies, and security of the facility. The construction of new facility would allow for the proper storage of equipment, vehicles, and materials, improved office space and employee work areas, locker rooms, meeting areas, fleet maintenance garage, fueling area, and a vehicle wash bay that all town departments could utilize. The new facility will also address the needs of the school maintenance staff, who require shops, vehicle storage, and storage space, storage space from which to operate. I believe now they're renting a location here in town. With me tonight is Jeff Alberti and Anthony Westpiezer from Weston and Sampson, who's the architect and engineering firm. The OPM on this project is PMA Associates. I'm gonna turn this over to Weston and Sampson to go through the presentation, and then if, obviously you will have questions, so we'll see you at that.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening. As mentioned, this is the project for the DPW and school maintenance facility at 99, 999 Whipple Road. This is just an overview of the site, you can see the red star in sort of the bottom left of your screen. The site is located at the intersection of Whipple Road and Pine Street, and this is the assessors map, so it's lot 30-26, it's about, roughly a 21, 22-acre site, which runs across to Pond Street, and you can see the outline of the site shown here in red. You can see that wing-shaped building that is to the right, that represents the main existing building. And we lost, there we go. So this is the aerial of the site, you can see Whipple Road to the right, Pine Street, in the bottom of your screen, you can see the wing-shaped building which represents the main building, and that's shown here with the red arrow and highlighted. This was, as mentioned, 60-plus-year-old building with some additions on it. Adjacent to that, to the left and in the rear of the site, is an existing, very old salt storage structure, and because of its age, the town has recently, relative to the year, constructed a new salt storage structure, shown here with the red arrow. And in the center between those two structures is an existing fueling facility.
So, hold on one second, I dimmed it on purpose, so that we could see it clear.
Oh, you didn't dim it?
No, I did dim it, you just turned it back up, I'm not really sure. Yeah. Makes it a lot harder to see.
How is it going, goofy now, anyway?
Oh, that's good. And in the bottom of the screen, this is the location of the existing food pantry, in the upper part is the recently constructed RECC, Regional Emergency Communication Center, shown in the upper right of the screen, so that kinda sets the stage of the existing site. And just to give you a sense, if you were up at a bird's-eye view on Whipple Road, looking into the site, this is an aerial view, so you can really see the structures, the wing-shaped blue building that represents the main structure, that was built in the 60s, added on to, and you can see in the background the salt storage structures, and to the left is the food pantry, the smaller building in the upper left. So as part of the project, we have gone through and begun to look at-- So as part of the project, we have gone through and begun to look at what we call environmental receptor maps. This is really looking at wetlands, areas of critical environmental concern, or natural heritage protected areas. And you can see the site generally outlined in red here, and you can see that there are some wetlands to the north and west of the site. And that's something that we're taking into consideration with the filing with the Conservation Commission, I'll mention a little bit later. And we also took a look at the FEMA flood maps, and you can see that the site is outside any FEMA flood areas. The site is owned as municipal, is shown here. And as that, you're looking at the table of use regulations, municipal, other municipal facilities are allowed under the municipal designation. And also, if you look at the table of dimensional requirements, while we do meet everything that's shown here, it does say in the regulations that town facilities are exempt from the dimensional requirements, but our plan is moving forward has been to meet those dimensional requirements that are set forth in the zoning bylaws. So just to talk a little bit about what is proposed. As was mentioned earlier, we went through a comprehensive space needs assessment process early in the project for both the Department of Public Works and School Maintenance, came up with approximately 63,500 square feet of space that's needed to meet the current and future needs of the two departments. And we broke those down into two buildings, and the reason that we did that was we really need to make sure we maintain operations on this site at all times. Obviously, we can't shut down the operations to build a new structure. So we worked closely with the operational understanding, the understanding of their operations to come up with this division of spaces. And building one, shown on the left, the pieces from building one primarily include vehicle and equipment storage, as well as the vehicle maintenance operation. And on the right hand side, this includes more of the main operations area, offices, employee facilities, workshops, a little bit more vehicle and equipment storage, as well as a wash bay that can be used by all town vehicles. So as we began our process, we worked closely with DPW and the School Maintenance Department to come up with multiple options, to come up with the most preferred for the site. And as what I'm presenting to you tonight is really what we would refer to as the optimal program. And obviously, it's important that the town must be able to afford this program. So we're continually working and developing cost estimates to understand the overall total project cost. And as part of that, we will continue to evaluate options to make sure that we have the most cost effective program to meet the needs of the department. So that's an ongoing process. But I wanted to at least present the optimal option that has been developed to date. So as part of that, for the first building that I mentioned, we refer to as building one, this was piecing together those components, including the vehicle maintenance and vehicle and equipment storage areas, as well as some canopy space. And also constructing in addition to the salt shed, because the older structure will ultimately be demolished. And as part of that, that allows us to build that initial building one, move the operations into that building, as well as some temporary trailers, make some space by demolishing the old building, opening up that yard area, and allowing us to construct the second phase, which is the offices and employee facilities, shop areas, as well as, I mentioned, some vehicle storage. This includes the school maintenance storage, which is part of the building on the lower end, and the vehicle wash on the upper end. And this is the preferred plan as shown as drawn up in our drawings. And you can see you have building one on the left, building two on the right. Excuse me. We have the salt storage structure, so this would be the existing structure, plus the small addition, as well as a new fueling facility. As you look at building one, this is a view looking from Pine Street. This is a general rendering of the overall massing of the building. This is where the vehicle maintenance operations are located. So you can see you have the higher volume to support lifting of vehicles inside. We have some overhead doors. We're using a factory foam insulated panel. It's generally a pre engineered metal building, which is the most cost effective structure for this type of operation. But not that, that flimsy metal panels, really code compliant, highly insulated envelopes. And as you look at building two, looking from Whipple, we have two views to show you, looking directly on from Whipple, this is view two in the bottom. And you can see that this one has varying heights in the front. You have the lower volume naturally for the offices and employee facilities, helps to break up the massing. We've maximized the fenestration to also break up the massing. And we used a durable base in both buildings of a masonry veneer up to approximately four feet to help the longevity of the building, but also to help break up the different materials and the massings of the different structures. To the right is specialty vehicle and equipment storage. And in the back part of the building is the shop areas, as well as storage for school maintenance operations. And as you move up Whipple a little bit, looking back into the site, what I really wanted to show with this one is over to the right hand side, you can see the entrance to the wash bay that is available for all town vehicles. Just to talk a little bit about the floor plan, this is building one. The first area I wanted to talk about is the vehicle maintenance operations. This is where the town fleet will be maintained. And obviously, we have smaller vehicles as well as larger vehicles, so it's sized to support that operation, lifting and maintenance of that equipment. It'll extend the longevity, much more efficient, allow equipment to be back out on the road versus out of service. In the center in gray is the vehicle and equipment storage area. This is very common to protect the town's investment in a multimillion dollar fleet. We allow those vehicles to park inside in a minimally heated garage, keeping them from the weather, allowing them to start and respond to the needs of the community. But there's some equipment that doesn't need to be in that minimally heated space. And so we bookended the storage garage with canopies, two canopies in the yellow areas. And this is basically three sided with a roof over canopy structure to keep the weather off it, protect that equipment from direct weather, but also minimize costs by not having to enclose it and heat that space. So that's building one. As you move over to building two, this includes several components. This is more of the operations of the, of the facility. You have your office areas shown in green. This is open office areas, private office areas, as well as conference rooms. Adjacent to that is the employee facilities. This is really the heart of the operation where staff will be reporting. This includes locker, shower, toilet facilities, all code compliant, muster area, lunch training room, as well as a snow operations area. And in the orange area represents the trade shops. This is both, both for DPW and school maintenance. And this is really material storage, work benches, some small equipment storage. And then bookending that in the two gray areas is some additional vehicle storage. On the left is the vehicle storage for school maintenance. And on the right is for specialty vehicle storage for DPW. And then all the way to the right is the vehicle wash bay. Just to talk briefly about the site development components, this is an overall view of that site. You can see the main DPW school maintenance operations area, where the two buildings are being constructed with the salt storage structure. In the back area, we have a regraded and reconfiguration of that yard area, make better use of what's currently there, moves some of those dark piles. And then surrounding the site, based on the stormwater design, we are proposing stormwater infiltration basins. And we're also proposing on the western part of the site in earthen berm to use some of the materials as we construct this facility to provide an earthen berm to really shield the operations from any of the adjacent abutters. This is about, it ranges from 10 to 15 foot high, two to one slope, earthen berm. Also, I just wanted to mention that in the rear of the site, there is a small area of wetland replication that we're proposing that's shown in red, about 4,900 square feet. And we're showing a replication area about 5,200. We did conduct a site walk with the Conservation Commission agent, have been discussing this project with them as well. And they're, they understand what we're currently proposing, and we will be going through that permitting process. Just to talk about the stormwater management system, as you would expect on a newer construction, we're going to have a much better stormwater management system for the site. Right now, it's a lot of surface runoff untreated. So with this, we'll have deep sump wooded catch basins. You can see them scattered throughout the site, around the perimeter to collect the stormwater, as well as some internal basins. Those will all be connected with underground stormwater piping. Those, that collection system will run to water quality structures prior to entering the infiltration basins. Those are shown in green on the plan. And then around the perimeter, as I mentioned earlier, we have infiltration basins shown here in blue. We're really working on developing a, a good planting and landscaping plan to help improve the perimeter of the site. You can see these green areas here representing the areas that we intend to plant with various plantings, anything from obviously loman seed. And in cases where we have a stormwater basins, we have our erosion control mixes, as well as some trees and shrubs throughout the site. So we're working through that process. Took a look at the parking requirements, and what we understand from section fifty one thirty on the parking requirements is that, as you can see with the red arrow, other municipal facilities, the parking appears to be as determined by the planning board. We've worked through what the parking load would be for the site, including full time employees, part time employees, seasonal employees. We've looked at estimates on future employees, as well as providing for visitors, and came up with a total of 68 spaces, and we're currently showing 70 spaces on our plan. And that includes some electric vehicle charging stations for both the public and DPW, as well as up to five visitor parking spots. The permits that we anticipate for this project include, as I mentioned earlier, notice of intent through the Conservation Commission and through the planning board, a site plan special permit, as well as major land disturbance. And just in closing, I do like to always identify and talk about what are the benefits of a project of this type. It certainly is great that it'll serve two departments that are in dire need of state of the art, modern facilities that are code compliant. And that's the first item. It provides those code compliant safe work environment for the town employees. It protects the town's multimillion dollar investment in vehicles and equipment. And that will extend the life expectancy of that, and that allowed us to, the town to reduce overall costs in the long term of replacing vehicles, as well as maintenance costs. So it's much more efficient workspace, allows better response times to serve the public. It does eliminate the need to continually invest in mandates in existing substandard facilities. And it replaces a facility that really is long past its useful life before it becomes a mandated emergency replacement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Start with Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Junior. Well, I had a list of questions, but I think you almost answered all of them. I see the fuel station has to move.
Correct.
Not, not, not a great distance, so that shouldn't be too bad. Screening of the area for the residential subdivision on, on street. I believe you're taking care of that with the berm. You think it'll, 15 feet high? The berm?
I'm sorry?
The berm will be 15 feet high?
It ranges from 10 to 15 feet, depending on.
What's the grade?
Uh, two to one.
Okay. And are you putting any trees on top of that, evergreens?
I don't think there's any proposed at the moment, but we could certainly look at that if.
Okay, because you mentioned some trees in the, in the area, but nothing specifically on there.
Correct.
Would it, could you just hold that in advance based on where they put the houses? We don't see a housing plan on there, so not sure where the houses are going to be. I haven't looked at it recently to see if it would be, the berm will effectively screen everything, that it has to be screened. Because when they, when that was approved, this wasn't here.
Correct.
It was the middle. Commingling of the DPW and the school maintenance, does that mean that some people will be doing jobs for both, or what?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
No.
No.
They won't. But I would say this, there is a opportunity for, with both organizations. Our mission is to maintain the infrastructure of the town, whether it's school facilities or whether it's, yeah, town facilities. And I think that the relationship, that close relationship, there is an opportunity where there can be some help when needed to try to get something done, such as taking down a tree or something like that over at the school apartment or whatever. I think it's, it, it would inherently help both organizations from a production standpoint. But to answer your question, no.
No.
They do schools, we do town facilities.
Very good. Thank you. Will the town still be doing composting in the same area or similar areas that is now?
Yes.
Okay. All set. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney.
I'm all set. I like the looks of it built.
Mr. Wright.
Thank you. I probably have a thousand questions, but I won't, I won't hammer you with you tonight. A couple of questions, though, critical questions. You know, elevation. What's the height of the building?
Typically, the vehicle maintenance area will run in the 28 to 30 foot range.
How about the vehicle storage?
Vehicle storage will be usually about four to five feet less.
Okay. What are you current, what's your total current square foot, Brian?
Twenty six thousand two hundred open closed space.
Yep.
We actually, when we, we were asked that question, we'd like to do a comparison of what else is stored outdoors that we're going to end up putting in.
Sure.
We have about another 20,000 square feet of outdoor storage that will be ultimately enclosed. That's vehicles and equipment and materials. And then I don't have the total square footage for school maintenance of what they had.
What they currently have?
Yeah.
Okay. So after, all said and done, everything will be under a roof?
Canopy or.
Correct, or, yeah, a roof, under a roof. Okay. You talked about heating in the main garage. When, when you say, is that going to maintain 40 degrees or?
We designed it for 50 degrees.
Okay.
Yeah. And usually they keep it lower because the diesels don't require, they just need to be above freezing.
Yep. What do you anticipate, what are you going with for a heating system?
We like to go with a radiant tube heater, suspended radiant tube heaters in the vehicle storage area.
Okay.
And so we're looking to heat mass versus the air because of the air exchange that happens when carbon dioxide from vehicles starting. And then in the other areas, it'll vary. We'll do energy recovery units in places like the vehicle maintenance area, because there's a continuous exhaust going on in that space.
Okay, so that was my next question. You were doing a recovery system.
Yes.
Okay. Have you looked at radiant versus in floor radiant?
So we do, we are proposing radiant floor in the vehicle maintenance area, where we know that we're going to have staff that spend a lot of time on the ground, but not in the vehicle storage area. We could certainly do that. We do know it's more expensive, which is why we go with the suspended radiant tube heaters.
Okay. Have you looked at, obviously, what is this, a 1% slope roof? Have you looked at solar?
Yes, we actually designed the roof for solar ready. So our structural calculations are all based on additional eight pounds per square foot for future solar, but we're not proposing it as part of the project at the moment. And we also provide space upon a mezzanine within the, the building, so that you can put equipment there in the future.
Okay. Providing the design, did you, is it faced suddenly? I mean, did you get your most exposure on orientation of the building for future?
Yeah, because of the low slope roof, it, it lends itself to really having the ability to face any direction. But our primary location was based on operations, not so much the solar. But we do have some pretty good self facing opportunities.
Okay. And then on the, I mean, I know this is becoming a big issue with DP. Have you looked at a rain catchment system? I know they're looking at reuse currently. Has that been investigated with, you're talking 63,000 square feet at an inch. Have you looked at using that as for your wash bays or?
We haven't put it in at this point. We have done that on several occasions where we, we like to capture it, put it up on a mezzanine, and then from there, we use the gravity to feed freshwater rinsing in many cases. The plumbing codes get a little more strict on that because of issues with contaminants that get in from feces from birds and things of that nature. So there would be a treatment system that would be required. But we currently don't have that. We could certainly look into that further.
Okay, because that determines what type of roofing material is used, so.
Yeah, right now we're proposing standing seam metal roof.
Okay, well, the coating itself has to be specific if, I mean, you have to, you know, you know, as you're doing for the solar, it's something you have to look forward if that's going to be, because I know DEP is looking at highly recommending versus mandating.
Yep, that's a, that's a great point. I know that the coating that we, we specify, I'm going to hack it, but it's a pro fluoromerc coating. It's really, it has no, no contaminants that were expected to be released from rainwater hitting and things of that nature. So we can make sure that that's verified as well.
Okay. Other than that, you're looking at rooftop units. Are you going with a heat pump or?
It's, no, it's just, we have boilers with, we're feeding... What is it? It's a hot water system, hot water supply and return system from a boiler.
Okay. And I'll probably be the last one. Your wash bay, is it automated or just standard?
Standard manual.
Standard. Okay.
Oh, sorry. Good point, Tony. Thanks. It does have automatic undercarriage, which we feel is very critical. So they can drive in, hit the undercarriage, and then once they're in, it'll be all manual wand systems.
Yeah.
And we put them up so that the hoses aren't dragging everywhere. We run two trolleys along the side so the hoses can run up and down. That goes to a water distribution system that's in a separate room.
Okay. Okay. I think this should be good for now. And, oh, I'm sorry. One other question. Roughly estimated, about 475 a square foot? You're anticipating?
Yeah, for construction, that sounds pretty, it's, I think we're...
All said and done, about 600 with excavation and?
Four, 492. We're in the middle of going through estimates now. We're trying to predict this crazy market. But yeah, it's in the high 400s a square foot for new construction.
Okay. I just, I've seen the projects out there right now. They're running four to 500 in excavation, roughly about 100 to 125 for finished grade. So about six, all said, potentially about 600 a square foot?
I'm sorry?
Roughly all said and done, potentially about 600 a square foot. You mean, all said and done? About just under 40 million?
So we're in the middle of going through estimates. Let me just jump back in. So the order of magnitude for construction roughly is around $560 a square foot right now.
Okay.
And then plus soft costs.
All right, so 36 million, give or take?
Yep, and then soft costs on top of that.
So about 40, all said and done? Okay.
Correct.
Design?
Yep, design, O P M. We include everything in the soft costs, too, from furnishings, communications, temporary facilities, legal costs, utility back charges, commissioning, moving costs. Try to get everything so there's no surprises.
Okay, so 40.
Yep. And then, yeah, as I mentioned, we're continually evaluating that. And as we do it, we look at options to make sure, as we're closer with the town, to figure out what they can afford. And as part of the process, we identify value engineering options or potential ways to save on costs, and we'll continue in that process.
Okay. Have you looked at design build?
Have not looked at design build. We've done some construction seam at risk, which is similar, but I find that, that that's a very effective and a very complicated project. The design bid build, we've seen, we have some really, this is a unique type of construction that's been very popular in Massachusetts for the last, I'd say, 10 years. A lot of towns are in the same boat that you guys are in with 50, 60, 70-year-old buildings. So there's a core of our contractors that are bidding these projects, and so we've seen some really competitive pricing.
Okay. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. It's because I can't help myself. Thousands and thousands that are at home watching. I think this would serve as an example of the benefit that the town receives from the board members who come with experience to, to the board.
Just your background, I'm a DPW director, so I...
I researched you online, so I...
I didn't know there was that many questions.
No, I could probably ask.
That was a great, it's really, you know, it's a great questions.
Yeah, no, I, I see, I think, you know, as you did state, there is a limited group of contractors in our building, I mean, actually, our building, bidding on these projects right now. So, but just the market right now.
Yeah. We saw some really big spikes about a year ago, just really out of control. But we recently bid some projects. We're starting to see them come down. So I think it's settling, and we're hoping it continues to settle.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt. Beyond the technical that Mr. Ratt just went through, I think I'd just say something similar to what Mr. Fowler brought up, which is just that, you know, the shielding for the, you know, for these buildings is going to be important. You know, as much as it can disappear without, you know, doesn't need to completely disappear, but the more it's shielded and sort of lost in the, you know, as some of it is now with the wood-ing, you know, around it, it's going to be important when these new buildings go in that we still have that sort of, you know, blend as much as possible in protection for, you know, there's residential all around it, basically. And I think that needs to be maintained as much as possible while putting in, you know, the new facilities that, you know, that are proposed here. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add? Any other questions? No?
Yeah, timeframe, obviously, this is going to go in time, town meeting. Do we, providing everything goes through town meeting, shovel on the grounds?
September, we're looking at something like that for sure.
The one thing I'll just add to the comment about shielding the operations, so we've configured the buildings in a way, not only to use the berm, but the buildings themselves act as a shield. And what's great is that everything goes indoors. So where, right now, you might have a lot of equipment outside moving and starting. That's now shifted indoors, and we found that that's a tremendous change to the overall sound and appearance that comes from a site once they have everything undercover, which is really great.
Mr. Fowler?
Something you said earlier brought something to my mind. The type of heating system you're going to be using in the garages. You were talking about transfer of carbon monoxide. I imagine when the vehicles start up, are you still using a Plimo vent type of vent effect?
So we'll have a similar type Plimo vent system in the vehicle maintenance area where they can do diagnostic work on vehicles. And the area where the vehicles and equipment are stored in the larger garage, that'll be handled with carbon monoxide, CO, and NOx nitrogen oxide sensors. And those will be connected to an exhaust system that'll evacuate the space.
Okay, good. Thank you. It'll be easier. Yeah. All right, very good. All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, good luck.
Thanks.
With that, move on to old business. Are there any old businesses anybody wishes to discuss? Seeing none? Any new business anybody wishes to discuss? Fowler?
Either one, I can just...
I want to wish Mrs. McGinty the best of luck. It is new business because you're not going to hear. And I was not around for the last two weeks, so I had no way to verbalize with you. But good luck in your journey with your new child.
Thank you.
Mr. Ratt?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, I want to thank Anna for putting up with us on some nights, and best of luck in the future.
Thank you.
I want to thank her as well for her...
Hey, can I ask better?
I'll echo the other members' comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work, and we'll miss you. With that, any correspondence? We didn't see any in the package. Anything coming after? Nope? All right. With that...
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Happy holidays, and we'll see you in the new year.